Thank you, we're ready. Okay. Good evening and welcome to tonight's Board of Education meeting. For starters, we're going to have a revenue neutral rate budget hearing. We need to call that hearing to order. And that changes to the agenda of that. So if someone would want to approve the agenda for the revenue neutral rate budget hearing, may I just move? Okay.
One second.
Motion by David, seconded by Gina, that USD 298 Board of Education approve the agenda for the revenue neutral budget hearing. All in favor? Ode? So. All right. Okay, if you will look for addendum one. You require revenue rate.
You just might notice down at the very bottom of the our in our hearing notice that we are exceeding the revenue neutral rate. It's very minimal, it's point three six one mils, but we have to take action in order to authorize that. And just as an FYI, beginning next year, if an entity such as us exceeds revenue neutral rate, then we have to absorb the cost of notifying taxpayers. All of you should have gotten a notification from the county treasurer that there was that we were going to exceed revenue neutral rate and this is the last time that the state's going to absorb those costs. So the postage and notification, things like that, we'll absorb it when we see next year. And I will go on my legislative rant.
Any other questions on that? And has? Okay. If that's the case, then we need a resolution to approve exceeding revenue neutral rate. And that would be a.
Yeah, I did need to point out, it needs to be individual roll call vote on this for the record, and then that record is submitted to the county clerk.
So I will read this resolution, and then we will have a motion in a second to adopt said resolution. Resolution number nine twenty-two oh one. A resolution expressing the property taxation policy of USD 298 Lincoln with respect to exceeding the revenue neutral tax rate for financing the annual budget for 2022-2023. Whereas 2022 HB 2239 amending KSA 79 dash 2988 provides that a levy of property taxes to finance the 2022-2023 budget of USD 298 exceeds the revenue neutral tax rate to finance the 2022-2023 budget of USD 298 be authorized by a resolution. Now, therefore, being resolved by Unified School District 298, that the 2022-2023 budget with a levy of property taxes exceeding the revenue neutral tax rates calculated for 2022-23, as adjusted pursuant to 2022 HB 2239 amending KSA 79 dash 2988 is hereby adopted. Adopted this 12th day of September. September 2022 by USD 298 Lincoln and Lincoln County, Kansas. Okay, I guess. Is going with. Do I have a motion to approve this res- adopt this resolution? Do you have something you want to say before we move?
I'll send them.
Okay.
One second.
Okay. Motion by Jason, seconded by Gina, that USD 298 Board of Education adopt resolution nine point two dash zero one.
This is one.
Okay. So now, do I just read names?
Oh, yeah.
And yes, sir.
I'm supposed to.
Okay.
So David Bell.
Yes.
John Podno.
Yes.
Joe Cooper.
Jason Cooper.
Yes.
Jack Harms.
Yes.
Jessica Gobman.
Yes.
And Greenham Reynolds.
Yes.
Okay.
Size. Okay. We have adopted resolution nine twenty-two oh one. And with that, we need a adjournment hearing?
I think they're not meeting, so I think we just go to the next.
Adjournment, okay.
So we don't have to adjourn, just go.
We were scheduled for seven fifteen. Oh, already too fast.
Okay. So we will still technically wait seven minutes to pull them out.
But here, basically. Okay. Okay, well, that's probably good. In front of you, you all have reading material. If you would like to look through that, that contains everything for our budget for this year. If there's any places you want to go and read, if you have time. We will start that hearing here in approximately nine minutes. You can also look at it in the two in the back of your packet because. Before we approve the agenda for that, I need to add a 3A LOB resolution. That's so that we can announce the 31% as another resolution that we get to read and adopt. New paperwork. I have to read, you get to adopt. So if we can do that, we'll add 3A, and then the rest of that agenda will be how it's presented. So I would take a motion to approve that agenda as presented.
May I just move?
Okay, thank you, David.
One second.
Thank you, Bree. Motion by David, seconded by Bree, that USD 298 Board of Education approve the amended agenda for the regular budget hearing. All in favor? Ode? Okay. I bring this to the budget hearing, which is your addendum two.
Yes.
Yes.
I'll just try to give you a little quick overview and just some insights. So if, again, if you look down at toward the very bottom of the page, there's a line on that spreadsheet that says total USD expenditures, and you'll notice we have two historical years and then the proposed budget. And I would like to point out that in the past, this will be the third year that we'll actually be reducing the mill levy overall. And our tax valuation for the district is forty million, two hundred and forty-two thousand, three hundred and twenty-eight dollars. So a mill is forty thousand, two hundred and forty-two dollars. So we're reducing our overall budget by point zero zero eight mils. That's better than an uptick. I will say this, I was doing some research just because I was curious. I looked back at 2008, 2009, when the school district was paying for the high school, and at that time, our mill levy was fifty-eight point something, fifty-eight and some change for a mill levy when the district was paying for that high school. So we're eleven, eleven mils down from that probably historical high with that new construction of the high school. Just thought I'd share a little history and let you know that, you know, we're not going crazy trying to raise taxes. We're trying to operate a very responsible, fiscally responsible budget. We've discussed that, but our lease purchase will go away at the end of this year also. So November of this year will be our last payment, and then technically we're debt free for now.
Okay. Any other questions on that? Okay. We'll move on to the LOB resolution. Resolution nine twenty-two oh two. Resolution to adopt LOB percentage Unified School District 298 Lincoln County, Kansas. Resolution, be it resolved that the above named school boards shall be authorized to make local option percentage in an amount of 31% for the 2022-2023 school year. This is to certify that the above resolution was duly adopted. Okay, so that's the resolution.
And just to give some background on that, if anybody doesn't remember or is unaware, we've been at 30% for LOB, and we had a discussion a couple of years ago, maybe, about going up to board authority of 33, and that was not adopted. However, we can, without any hearings or any board action, match the state average. And there are so many schools that have gone to 33% that the state average has crept up and is now 31, and we were at 31 last year, and we'll be at 31 again this year. I guess it's not new information, it's new information to me, that this resolution was in the interest letter from the state today, and to be quite honest, I had never seen this before. I was talking to Dr. Pedram, a retired superintendent, and he said that they had done it the last couple of years, but it has not been a topic of conversation, that you have a resolution for your LOB percentage. When we ran across it today, we decided we probably shouldn't get the paperwork and just kind of make sure that we're dotting our i's and crossing our t's. Okay.
So with that, I would take a motion to approve.
Okay, so move.
Okay, thank you, Gina.
One second.
Thank you, Jessica. Motion by Gina, seconded by Jessica, that USD 298 Board of Education adopt resolution nine twenty-two oh two. The LOB percentage. Any other discussion? All in favor? Ode? Six oh. Now, we can accept the budget as presented unless there is any other discussion on it. Accept the motion to approve it.
I'll send them.
Okay.
One second.
Motion by Bree, seconded by Jessica, that USD 298 Board of Education adopt the 2022-2023 USD 298 Lincoln proposed budget. Any other discussion? All in favor? Six oh. All right, thank you. Okay. Number two, if we're going to that, do you want to move to the three? I will call that to order at seven. Okay. I would take a motion to adopt the agenda unless there is any changes that anyone else has. Mr. Cuero.
May I just move?
David.
One second.
Jason. Motion by David, seconded by Jason, that the USD 298 Board of Education approve the agenda for the discussion. All in favor? Six oh. Okay, consent agenda. If you look down the consent agenda, we have an amendment on the special meeting. There were some things that needed included in the minutes under number three, and so we will have the amended minutes of the special meeting of August 29th. I don't know if you have a mic and read number three and what it's changed to if you would like. Here's Scott Crenshaw, superintendent, and four Board of Education members of House Bill 2567, the directives as they pertain to school districts. Each school district is now required to review district needs assessments and state assessment scores in preparation of budget approval. The budget should reflect district commitment to future success of students and district needs. Mr. Crenshaw led board members through the required district needs assessment and reviewed student academic achievement. So that is the change. Nothing major, but so we're all aware. We also need to approve the regular minutes of August 8th, payment of bills, treasury report, clerk's report, rec. commission report. That's in there. And accept the $200 donation from the United Methodist Church for junior high student needs.
Um, you do.
Okay, thank you, Gina.
One second.
Good, thank you, Bree. Motion by Gina, seconded by Bree, to approve the items listed on the consent agenda consisting of, approve the minutes of the regular meeting of August 8th, 2022. Approve the amended minutes of the special meeting of August 29th, 2022. Approve payment of the bills. Approve the treasury report. Approve the clerk's report. Approve the Lincoln County Rec. Commission Report by Michaela, Mrs. E. And accept the $200 donation from the United Methodist Church for junior high student needs. Any other discussion? All in favor? Six oh. Okay. That brings us to the ESP presentation.
I would like to introduce three gentlemen, two of who I know, one of who I met tonight, but I think we've met at a conference or something because we kind of recognize. So as you know, last year, we had a big discussion on efficiencies, utilities, and things like that. Our utility bill, if you look in your board packet, last month, the S.A.R. electric and water for the city was over $9,000. We did find one of the major reasons for that, and that has been corrected, so we'll ongoing monitor that. But if you'll remember, we had a proposal on LED lighting throughout the district with some ideas of some savings and everything else. And I would introduce Jeff Flackman, he's the president of ESP, and if you haven't, you have already known that. Get it?
Yeah.
ESP. Steve. That went bad.
That was not how we came up with the name of the company, but I heard.
For the next port book. Steve Pedram, I've known for several years, and he retired out of Woodson County, Yates Center area was his last assignment, duty assignment, I guess you could will. And then Brad Ray is also a retired superintendent. And they came and had a conversation with me and wanted an opportunity. I talked extensively with Steve and Brad about efficiencies and how, you know, the way we are going to continue to operate and thrive is becoming more and more efficient, and they think that they can offer some solutions. So invited, I'm here to present to you.
Welcome, gentlemen.
Thank you.
Yeah, Steve will hand out. It's kind of ending stuff yet. You know, we're former superintendents, you get the pleasure. I, you ever seen the movie with Steve Martin where the new phone books are out, new phone books are out? When the budgets come out, I just sit there in my office for days and just quit. I'm a sick person, I'm sorry, I apologize, but like your budget, the state with new rules and new laws, if you know, you're in September and you have, you know, just passed your budget, usually they're in there, their state department, they're laying them out, and it kind of makes me enjoy myself. So anyways, a little bit about us and we'll introduce ourselves to kind of tell you a little bit. I'm Brad Ray. I was a thirty-some years in education. I grew up in Hiawatha, spent forever up there in northeast Kansas. Luntown University, graduated, got a principal that, or that, I was a teacher in Great Bend, language arts. Then I went to Independence as an assistant principal, Valley Center as a principal, Wellington as a principal. Then I decided to really get in education and became superintendent, superintendent in Humboldt, superintendent in Holton. Then I went to Mulvane for nine years as an interim superintendent. Interim, they kept asking me back, and I kept, ah, sure, another year, let's roll, you know? You've been an interim superintendent, it's a pretty good deal. You know, your attitude's just a little bit different when you're dealing with problems. So anyway, nine years as an interim superintendent, then I am retired, came into work with ESP, and I'm here now. You know, the thing we like to do, and you're going to hear us talk about continually through this, is the fact that we're in this for the districts and for the schools, and that's the reason I'm here. You know, it's the fact that they let us as former superintendents think like former superintendents, you know? How can we save money? What can we do for kids? What can we do for teachers? And that's our main focus. This is Steve Pedram. Steve, tell them about yourself. Retired superintendent, this is my first board meeting to attend after retirement, so I'm nervous. No, I grew up in a community called Quinmo, Kansas. I was in the top half of my class of thirteen, or at least I claim that, half the class of cousins, so promise of the top, but we managed through all that. And then I ended up at Independence Community College with Brad. We were roommates, we were born on Christmas, so we got too much going in common. I graduated from Drake University, received a doctorate from Wichita State, been superintendent at Cherryville, Kansas, at Silver Lake, Kansas, and San Pay Trail, Yates Center was the last one. Yates Center is pretty much a mirror image of this school district. We have about 425 kids there, give or take, with declining enrollment, and assessed valuation, about to say 39,000. So a lot of similarities there. And I'm also a customer. We did a $1.2 million project with ESP that covered all our utilities and our big asbestos problem. So we tried to take our savings and put it towards the asbestos, and we'll pay that off in twelve years. I think they got ten left on that, so. What would be about Steve? He was an eight-man quarterback. He could throw the ball the length of the field.
On an eight-man field.
To his brother, who was really fast. This is Jeff. Jeff owns the company, and he's the president of the company, and he's the one that tolerates us. And Jeff has got, is going to kind of lead the presentation here today. Each school district is now required to review district needs assessments and state assessment scores in preparation of budget approval. The budget should reflect district commitment to future success of students and district needs. Mr. Crenshaw led board members through the required district needs assessment and reviewed student academic achievement. So. That is the change. Nothing major, but so we're all aware. Uh, we also need to approve the regular minutes of August eighth, um, payment of bills, Treasury report, Purge report, Rec Commission report. That's in there. And accept the two hundred dollar donation from the United Methodist Church for junior high student needs.
Um, you do something.
Okay. Gina.
I have a second.
Good, thank you, Bree. Motion by Gina, seconded by Bree, to approve the items listed on the consent agenda consisting of approve the minutes of the regular meeting of August eighth, twenty twenty-two. Approve the amended minutes of the special meeting of August twenty-ninth, twenty twenty-two. Approve payment of the bills, approve the Treasury report, approve the Clerk's report, approve the Lincoln County Rec Commission report by Michaela, Mrs. E. And accept the two hundred dollar donation from the United Methodist Church for junior high student needs. Any other discussion? All in favor? Six oh. Okay, that brings us to the ESP presentation.
Um, I would like to introduce three gentlemen, two of who I know, one of who I met tonight, but I think we've met at a conference or something because we kind of recognize. So, uh, as you know, last year we had a big discussion on efficiencies, utilities and things like that. Uh, our utility bill, if you look in your board packet, last month, the Star Electric and Water for the city was over nine thousand dollars. Uh, we did find one of the major reasons for that, and that has been corrected, so we'll ongoing monitor that. But if you'll remember, we had a proposal on LED lighting throughout the district with some ideas of some savings and everything else. And, uh, I would introduce Jeff Flackman, he's the president of ESP. And if you haven't, you have already known that. Get it?
ESP.
Steve. That went bad.
That was not how we came up with the name of the company, but I'm here.
For the next board book. Steve Pedram I've known for several years, and he retired out of Woodson County, Yates Center area was his last assignment, duty assignment, I guess you could will. Um, and then Brad Ray is also a retired superintendent. Um, and they came in and had a conversation with me and wanted an opportunity. I talked extensively with, uh, Steve and Brad about efficiencies and how, you know, the way we are going to continue to operate and thrive is becoming more and more efficient. And they think that, uh, they can offer some solutions, so invited him here to present to you.
Welcome, gentlemen.
Thank you.
Yeah, Steve will hand out, uh, it's a kind of end of stuff yet. You know, we're former superintendents, you get a pleasure. I, you ever seen the movie with, uh, Steve Martin where the new phone books are out, new phone books are out? When the budgets come out, I just sit there in my office for days and just quit. I'm a sick person, I'm sorry, I apologize. But like your budget, the state with the new rules and new laws, if you know, you're in September and you have, you know, just passed your budget. Usually they're in there, their, their state department, they're laying them out and it kind of makes me enjoy myself. So anyways. Little bit about us and we'll introduce ourselves to kind of tell you a little bit. I'm Brad Ray. I was a, uh, thirty-some years in education. I grew up in Hiawatha, uh, spent forever up there in northeast Kansas, uh, Lehigh University, graduated, got a principal. That, or that, I was a teacher in Great Bend, language arts. Then I went to, uh, Independence as an assistant principal, Valley Center as a principal, Wellington as a principal. Then I decided to really get in education and became a superintendent, superintendent in Humboldt, superintendent in Holton. Then I went to, uh, Mulvane for nine years as an interim superintendent. Interim, they kept asking me back, and I kept, ah, sure, another year, let's roll, you know? You've been an interim superintendent, it's a pretty good deal. You know, you, you, your, your attitude is just a little bit different when you're dealing with problems. So anyway, nine years as interim superintendent, then I am retired, came into work with ESP, and I'm here now. The thing I'd like to do, and you're gonna hear us talk about continually through this, is the fact that we're in this for, for the districts and for the schools. And that's the reason I'm here, you know, is the fact that they let us as former superintendents think like former superintendents, you know? How can we save money? What can we do for kids? What can we do for teachers? And that, that's our main focus. This is Steve Pedram. Steve, tell them about yourself.
Um, retired superintendent, this is my first board meeting to attend after retirement, so. I'm nervous. No, I, uh, grew up in a community called Quinmo, Kansas. Uh, I was in the top half of my class of thirteen, or at least I claim that. Uh, half the class of cousins, so promise of top. But we managed through all that. And then I ended up at Independence Community College with Brad. We were roommates, we were born on Christmas, so we got too much going in common. I graduated from Drake University, received a doctorate from Wichita State, been superintendent at Cherryville, Kansas, at Silver Lake, Kansas. And San Pay Trail, Yates Center was the last one. Yates Center is pretty much a mirror image of this school district. We have about four hundred and twenty-five kids there, give or take, with declining enrollment. And, uh, assessed valuation, about to say, thirty-nine thousand. So, a lot of similarities there. And I'm also a customer. We did a one point two million dollar project with, uh, ESP that covered all our utilities and our big asbestos problem. So we tried to take our savings and put it towards the asbestos, and we'll pay that off in, uh, twelve years. I think they got ten left on that, so.
What would be about Steve? He was an eight-man quarterback. He could throw the ball the length of the field.
On an eight-man field, yeah.
To his brother who was really fast. Uh, this is Jeff. Jeff owns the company, he's the president of the company, and he's the one that tolerates us. And, and Jeff has got, is gonna kind of lead the, the presentation here today. Uh, in front of you, again, you've got like everything that we're gonna talk about, you've got a copy of the, uh, the PowerPoint and plus some other information from us, so with that, thank you, Jeff.
Do you want to line out to see the?
Talk to you guys, sure, whatever's easy. And I'm trying to make sure I don't, like, get in the way of that. I, I, you know what, I can just be, like, over here, it's fine, so, um, a little bit about myself, I guess, since we're, we're giving that background. I was born and grew up in Kansas City, but my father was a pastor, so standing behind the thing for me is a little, that's my dad's thing, that's not mine. I'm an engineer, okay, so if you see me looking at my feet while I'm trying to talk to you, that's just because that's who I am, okay? But, uh, went from Kansas City to, uh, Rushville, Nebraska, very northwest Van Halen, Nebraska, and then Minnesota, graduated with twenty-two kids. Moved back to Kansas City because that was always kind of home. Worked for a number of years, started ESP about sixteen years ago, mainly because the company that I worked for, they said, well, we're not gonna go after anything less than three million dollar project. And I was like, well, that's just kind of silly, because the people I want to help, the people I like working for, it's probably not gonna be a three million dollar project, right? So started ESP, uh, about sixteen years ago. I will say, uh, Scott, nobody really ever picked up on ESP, and I didn't even when I started it. But then several years into it, I thought, wow, I, I should start using that, and be careful, I know what you're thinking, right? And I would say that to twenty and thirty-year-olds, and they're like. So I gave up on that, but you, you would agree, right? So tonight, really, um, mostly, well, if it works. Why is it not working? Um, Brad, I may need you to. There we go. Just sit up here and click that, or maybe if I leave it there, we'll try it.
No, I'm a superintendent, technology's not my big deal.
All right, all right. Mostly tonight, we're not asking you to do anything, we're here to just try to give you some information and, and, uh, let you know who we are and what we do and how we think that can help you. And really, it's, it's your decision as to whether what we do can help you or not. And we hope to give you enough information to help you feel like maybe we can bring some value to you. Anybody familiar with performance contracting, have you heard of it? Okay. It's a pretty simple thing, I'll explain it, but it's, in, in essence, it's, it's been my life for over thirty years. And the main thing about it that I really, really like is, the whole concept is, our job is to help you be better stewards of the resources that you have in your disposal, okay? To figure out how to save and then stretch every dollar that you are managing as the Board of Education and get the best impact for your community. How can you not be okay with that, right? So it's been a real pleasure for me to be involved in that. And I'll explain a little bit about that, where we find savings, all throughout your district, there's a whole lot of different ways that we can do that. What the process is, how you can use this tool, and that's really what it is. It's, it's a tool, energy performance contracting is a method to gate, uh, gain improvements in your facilities in a budget neutral way, okay? And then a little bit about us, which, we talked a lot about us, so maybe we won't talk that much about us as we move forward. But, um, really, as I shared tonight, I mostly just want to try to educate you a little bit about what it is we do and, uh, who we are and how we can help you. Does that sound all right? Okay. What is energy performance contracting? How do you guys usually, if, if you're gonna do construction and do work, how do you normally get it done? Plan, bid, secure the bids, and then go to work, right? Performance contracting is really just a tool for securing improvements. And kind of like, you know, you, if you're hanging sheet rock, uh, you might want to use a hammer and a nail, or it might be a lot faster if you have a nail gun, right? But if you're hanging a picture and you're trying to use a nail gun, the nail's gonna go all the way in and you're, right? So it's a tool, it's just a way of getting things done, getting improvements, uh, secured. Uh, but where it's different is that in order to implement through energy performance contracting, we as the people who help you implement the improvement, we have to guarantee the cost. And we have to guarantee the savings that is gonna pay for that cost, okay? And so it's a real luxurious way for you to secure improvements, if you trust the people you're working with, right? So that's part of our job, is to get you to trust us a little bit, okay? And there's myriad of ways you can pay for it. You can, we, uh, work with finance providers who, because they know we've been doing this a long time, they say, okay, sure, we'll own money because you're guaranteeing it, and we know your guarantee is good, so then you can give money. So you don't have to pay money upfront. We help you secure the money to pay for the improvements, right? In today's environment, there's S R funds, I don't know where you guys staying with your S R funds, maybe you've spent it all, maybe you haven't. You can, through this enabling legislation in Kansas, which I should, I should have said that right up front. There is enabling legislation in the state of Kansas, actually, all except two states in the United States allow this tool for procurement, okay? So it is a legal thing, we're not asking you to step out of the boundaries of what's appropriate. But there's also, and we have connections to some folks, there's, there's another program that's out there that is gonna be specifically for rural districts. And, um, it doesn't sound, you know, some people says, he says, but it's five hundred million dollars that we know about and we're ready to try to tap into for our rural folks in Kansas and, and. But, boy, you know, do you want a federal program or do you not? Again, you know, then we have to investigate that together and understand, is it worth all the hoops that you have to jump through? But so that, that's where you come up with the money. But the bottom line is, you guys just talked about your budget, and so you know you're spending about a hundred thousand. I'm just gonna say that. If it was nine thousand dollars, maybe nine times of all of my due, my math, right, maybe a hundred and eight or a hundred and ten, right? So let's just say you're spending a hundred thousand, uh, for your utilities today. We would say, okay, there are things that you can do, maybe lighting improvements, maybe water conservation, maybe improve the building envelope so that we tighten up the windows or the roofs or things so that there's not infiltration and things coming in. Maybe replace heating and air conditioning, maybe add controls. So there's this whole longer list of things that we can look at, right? That if we implement, it will take your cost from a hundred thousand a year to seventy thousand a year. And then that thirty thousand of savings becomes what you use to pay for the improvements over time. Does that make sense? And what we have to do is we have to measure and prove to you that you actually got that savings. And if you don't, then we have to write the check for the difference. Haven't had to write too many checks or I wouldn't make a business. I'd just be candid, you know? So, but does that make sense, the, the concept? Is that pretty easy? And, and so, again, that's why I say, it's been my livelihood because I can really get behind this. This is something that everyone should be doing, right? And, and probably you're already doing it, but you're maybe not capturing the savings in a way that allows you then to go get more money to get more improvements, right? So, um, that's the concept. Where do we find savings? Everybody knows, in your facilities, you probably have things that are inefficient, right? But we also look at the supply side, so we'll evaluate, are you paying the best rates possible? Are there things that we can do to get a better supply of gas, electric, water for you? Maybe something, are your football fields, uh, natural turf? So do you, do you irrigate them sometimes, right? So maybe you guys are already doing it, maybe you're not, but a lot of people who use city water to irrigate their fields, that water isn't going into the sewer, right? But part of your water bill is you pay water and you pay sewer, right? Well, every gallon that goes into irrigation, you should not be paying sewer charge, right? So we can put on a meter and we can reduce the amount that you have to pay for sewer by the amount that you're putting on your field. Candidly, you put a lot more on your field than what kids today take in their shower, right? So, so that's a big opportunity for potential savings. I don't know what your situation is, we have to come and look at your facilities, but I'm just saying that there are, on the supply side, there's things like that. We can look at wind, we can look at solar, it's totally what your appetite is for those things, but that's within our wheelhouse of things that we can look at, right? Behavior is a little bit of a tough one, but candidly, how people use the stuff, no matter how efficient it is when we put it in there, if they're not using it right, you're still wasting energy. So our job is to try to help educate your staff, your students, your people about how, anybody have any idea how much one degree impacts your energy consumption? Wild guess. Anybody have a feel? One degree, three percent. Do you think your body feels the difference between seventy-two and seventy-one? Ninety-four percent of people don't. So guess what? If you convince people, do it at seventy-one, you're saving three percent and everybody's still comfortable. So those are the kind of things that we want to come in and we want to work with those and say, well, let's, let's get to the point where everyone's still comfortable, but we're using the least amount of energy possible to make people comfortable, right? So those, everything, how you buy your energy and where you get it from, how you use it and how the people use it, all can generate savings. And so that's why I can tell you confidently that we pretty much always find twenty to thirty percent of energy reduction, pretty much every facility we go to. And that's not blowing smoke, I mean, that's just a reality. But one of the things we do is, we would recommend, well, let us come in and do a preliminary look, and we'll tell you. And, and if we don't feel like there's savings, it, it's pointless for us to come and try to do work if you're already, you know, if there's nothing we can save you. So, um, that's how, that's the, that's what we did. And so that kind of leads into the process of every project, you have to develop, implement, and then that last piece is where energy performance contracting is a little different, because we have to prove. We can't just say, oh, we think we're gonna accomplish this for you. We actually have to measure it, prove it, and, and show you that we can achieve it, right? Our approach to developing a project is always to do what I shared with you, preliminary analysis. And that's a complimentary, no cost to you guys, that's our cost for being in business. That's the way I look at it, is that as a businessman, I've got to have some costs, and that's one of the things, is we always want to be people who are equal in our work, you know? So if, if we can do this preliminary look, and we can understand together what we might be able to accomplish, then we all have a goal of, okay, this is what they said, so now as we move forward. And what I can tell you, the way that I view that preliminary analysis is, moving forward, if you would choose to go to the next step, which is an investment grade audit. If we don't achieve at least in the realm of reasonable, close to what we said in the preliminary, then you don't owe us anything, right? And that's just, because if, if we can't do what we say, we shouldn't give it. All right, does that, does that make sense? So, um, implementation is actually very similar to the way that you guys just implement any project you do. And candidly, a lot of people want to know where we make our money, that's where we make our money, okay? We actually provide the engineering to do the development, but we make our money as the general contractor. We oversee, we manage the implementation of the subcontractors, we secure bids from multiple folks, and then we build the project. Why do you think it is that I want to do that?
Control the numbers.
Control the numbers a little bit, but also what happens if the contractor who gives me a bid and I'm not involved, if they decide, boy, that piece of equipment that's forty percent less efficient, but it costs ten percent less? I want to put that one that's cost less because the contractor wants to make more profit. Does he have to write the check if the savings doesn't get achieved? No, I do. So I, I, we can't, you know, there's gotta be some connection between being able to provide a guarantee and overseeing from a control perspective, yes, but not just because we want to be, you know, micromanaging, but because we, in order to manage our risk, we, that's what we need to do. Does that make sense? And then the verification is literally, some folks believe in, look at your utility bills before and after, and that's the way to prove whether we got you the savings. Literally, this is, this will blow your mind, but this is, we, we deal with this sometimes. You're, you're offering a guarantee for stuff, for stuff. Imagine that you, we did a project for a school district that had four buildings, their population was growing, they added an elementary school. Added a whole school. And they said, well, but you said our bill was gonna be twenty percent less. What are you gonna say? You added a whole other coach, right? So the utility bill, while it sounds like a great way of, of proving together that we, we got stuff done, we believe in, if, if we do lighting, let's measure how much these lights consume before we change them. Let's measure how much they consume afterwards, and the delta tells us whether we hit our efficiency or not, right? And then we can measure how many hours, and then we can tell you, we, we got it or we didn't, right? Because a building is, is something that's pretty cut and dry, right? Everybody knows that happens. But if you ever had, you know, maybe added a breakfast program for a summer just because you needed to for, for students or things like that, or maybe you had a shop class that you put a new elder in, so your utility bill is gonna go up because of those things, right? And for us to have to, you tell me and me argue with you about how much, how many hours does that thing be? Let's just, the things that we do, let us measure it and prove to you what we do or don't get, right? So that's the tool and the process, a little bit about us. We're a totally independent company, okay? We're, uh, it's, we all kind of have our gray hairs, actually, I will be honest about our company, we're, we've been around for a long time. And this actually kind of excites me about our team, is that independence allows us to be who we really as a team want to be. And that is that we don't have a particular product that we're trying to sell, we're not gonna push an agenda of, well, we want you to buy train, or we want you to buy Johnson Controls, or, you know, maybe. We're going to evaluate your situation, and we're gonna understand what your application is, and then we're gonna look at all of the products that are available and have everybody competitively bid. Why do you think we want to do that? It's for you guys, right? Because that's gonna drive values, gonna make sure you get the lowest cost and the best product for your given situation. We're pretty fierce about that independence. I've actually been around long enough and had enough success that a lot of those companies that you see listed up there, they've tried to buy us because they want us to represent their product. I'm interested. It's not, it's not who we are, it's not why we got into business. We are streamlined, we are a pretty small company. Um, I, I, candidly, we've got about twenty people in the company, and, and, uh, so we're not huge, uh, we're not one of these multi-billion dollar companies. But what I can assure you, uh, is we've been doing this a long time, and we are financially secure. Did a project for the University of Kansas that we had to guarantee them almost two million dollars a year in savings. I don't think we'll be quite that much here, right? So, and that's not to, to belittle this, but I just want you to know that even though we're small and we're streamlined, which means low overhead, low cost, you're not paying for us to manufacture a product or have things done overseas, you're paying us to be here to run your job, and that's it. So we're able to offer our services for very low cost, and yet we've got all the gray hairs and the people that have been doing it a long time, so if you would compare our team to these other companies, we're actually more experienced, better track record of success, we've been doing it longer than these big companies. But we do it as a team because we want to offer the best value and we love what we do, because we believe in, we believe in helping communities. And that kind of leads to this transparency, right? Totally open book. You'll see what our costs are, you'll see the fees that we're charging you, we, we share it all. And candidly, if, if you're not comfortable with a, a, a fee that we're saying, well, it costs us this much to do the engineering, we'll explain it to you and we'll, we'll negotiate it, and, you know, we'll get to something that feels right. And, and that's just the way we do business. Any questions on any of that? Does that make a little sense about how we structured ourselves and why? I do, you know, that, that, the bottom note there, stewardship, that really is what our whole team is about. We want to help people improve and, and make sure that you're, you know, doing things that are gonna allow not just the kids today, but the, every generation to have a good place and, and, you know, be using the resources that we have efficiently and effectively. We have done a lot of projects kind of right around you and, and very similar in size. Brad, are you wanting to talk about these much?
I just touched base on them, especially.
I already touched base on them. Especially, you know, in fact, oh, you know, Steve, we did his project and it was a great project, you know? Now, and we do everything that he needed from the IQ, which is fixing the air, basically. You know, we come in and we can put things in the air to purify the air.
Indoor air quality.
It's called indoor air quality. But, you know, that, Valley Falls, they're a phase one, a phase two. A lot of times, we'll have people invite us back, you know? It's, it's such a great process with them. And this, what's the deal about Valley Falls is they passed a bond issue and as part of their bond issue, they had talked to Jeff about a year earlier and said, hey, what would it cost for us to do our high school, the same system you put in at our elementary? But the elementary had a window air conditioner that was noisy. Uh, so Jeff says, well, it's going to cost though about three hundred or, I can't remember.
Four fifty.
Yeah, four fifty. So, they capitalized their bond, you know, we can do all of your high school for four fifty. Well, what's happened since then? Prices just jumped to the roof. And they passed their bond issue and they come back and Jeff said, hey, the architects said, they, they can't meet that price. There's no way in the world they can do a four hundred and fifty dollar project. Would you do it? And, and Jeff is kind of the same way. Sure. And he made it happen. You know, I, I can't believe he did it, but he did it. And they did their project. They actually, today we've got the last bill on it. We're closing out the process. They have everything they want and they go back and tell their taxpayers, you know, that ESP did us a great job. They kept our pricing from a year ago.
Now, that, that's... I can tell you that one wasn't easy. That one might have hurt a little bit, but we did, you know, it's, it's, uh...
The pair of the top of the moon into there and they've had problems for at least ten to fifteen years with these, with their systems not working right. So, we go in and we sit, you know, let us investigate it, we'll see what's going on, maybe we can fix it. Well, we went in there and the units were put in backwards.
The fans.
The fans. So, instead of blowing, they were stuck in, you know? So, I mean, there's no way in the world it was ever going to work right. So...
So, you don't have, if you have a, a dropped ceiling, the return air is supposed to get pulled up into the plenum and then they get drawn back to the unit, right? And then the, you've got the diffuser, which is where the supply air comes out. Well, it was drawing the air through the diffusers up to the unit and then the unit was feeding the plant. So, they were always hot and they were always cold because the air wasn't coming into the space properly, right? So, but it was just enough that the installing contractor and all of it, and that's just part of it. And so, ironically, that, that tells a little bit another, yes, we want to be in control. Part of our job is to be the third set of eyes, to oversee the contractors and the people that are installing this stuff and make sure that it's done right, you know? And because if it's not done right, you're going to be using way more energy and then all be right issues. So, it all kind of feeds on itself, right?
The next one, Larson, that we've done in the area, North Ottawa, we did an LED project for them, which was great, you know, and they've done, I'll tell you, they saved them a lot of money. Troy was LED, Center LED. Solomon was an interesting one. That was the first project that I ever brought to Jeff. And I'm just, you know, Jeff, woo-hoo, you know, I've got one for you. Solomon needs some LED lights and we can do this, we can get involved here. And Jeff goes, Brad, nice job. Glad you brought something to us. So, I go and they had an RFP already written, I brought it to Jeff. Jeff looks at it and says, okay, I'll take it to our people. We'll, we'll put together a proposal and take it to them. Well, about three days later, Jeff calls me and says, Brad, I want you to know that yes, I will give them a proposal, but if we win, we're not going to take the job. I'm going, Jeff, this is my first project, why can't we do this? He said, well, here's the deal. He says, part of our company philosophy is if a project's not right for a customer, we're not going to do it. He goes, I looked at this proposal, our engineers looked at it, and what they were proposing to save money is not anything we would ever do. The rooms are going to be dark, they're not going to like the classrooms, and if the teachers aren't happy and the students aren't happy, we didn't do our job. He goes, in order to help them get their three bids, we'll give them a bid, but he goes, I, I don't want to do it. So, we went to their board and hoping that they asked, what would you do? And Jeff said, here's what we would do. They selected us, happy, saved money. They took their savings and built a transportation building. So, you know, that, that's just kind of the way that, that this company, it's just a good thing, that's how we operate. You know, we're going to do what's best for you. And, and you know, it's not our project, it's your project. And that's how we look at it, is how can we help you put the best project out there? I was a superintendent when they, uh, my first shot at the interim at Moldane was, they hired me, they said, hey, Dr. Ray, glad you're here, but we got to a million dollars. This was back in oh-nine, and I'm going forward.
Oh, my.
Oh, my. So, we came in and did it, because, you know, my philosophy on being a superintendent is my job is to take copper pennies and make copper wire. So, we look everywhere we can save money. That's, I did two projects with this, with ESP. Three?
Remember we fixed the border.
Oh, yeah, we had a border in the, in the city that just blew up. And I called Jeff, said, Jeff, man, we need some help. And next thing I know, we had a portable generator in our parking lot. They fixed everything and life went on. So, you know, those are, those are things that we do. And, you know, it's, it's a, I'm sold on the process, that it's all the best for students and kids. It just makes a big difference. So, those are just some of the projects that we've done. And we've done a lot more. We've got, uh, some going in the area right now, Hoytington, we're getting ready. And Hoytington's an, an ESSER project where as far as what we do for ESSER, you have to go through all these steps for, for the State Department in order to get an ESSER project. So, when we come in and do an ESSER project, we're, we're going to walk you through it. You know, we're going to help you, uh, get with the, the state and make sure that historical society, get your environmental letters, you know, we take care of that for you. We put together your plans for your pre-construction so that it's designed, so you can turn that in. When you do your RFP for it, we will write the RFP for it so that it's correct, but it comes from you as part of the ESSER. It has to be bid from you, it can't be bid from us. So, we set it up where it's on your letterhead, it's your paper, it's everything you hold the, you hold the, the opening, but we, we work with you to manage it. That's everything we do with ESSER to make sure it's successful, so. I'm done.
Sorry.
I'm just low-topping school boards, I'm just...
I think I've heard other ones, maybe. Well, that's, we're, we're kind of at the end, so just to maybe summarize, the, the concept that we're talking about is energy performance contracting and that is just, it's a tool for securing energy savings and facility improvements. And hopefully, if we do everything right, it's a budget neutral thing, you know? So, it, it allows you to just get more out of the money that you're already bringing and make a better learning environment, make a better building, reduce your utility costs. We are a Kansas company. We, we, Kansas is where we've done most of our work. I will be honest, we're close enough to that Missouri border that we do go into the dark land. I'm kidding. And we're, we're working in Oklahoma a little bit now and so forth, so. I really do, we are fiercely independent. I mean that genuinely. In your packet, if you would look, um, we provided a fair bit of more brag slides about us. I'm not, I'm not real big on talking about this often, just not, but there is some more information in there, both in the, from the presentation and in the pamphlet. You know what? This, this tool, I can tell you, it really is, if, if it's implemented properly, it can be a huge value to your community, to your students. And it's not just financial, it's technical, it's, you know, it, it helps people. The IQ thing that I kind of whispered in his ear is indoor air quality with, whether you believe COVID was overblown or not overblown, the bottom line is having healthy, uh, comfortable environment for your kids. Why wouldn't you want to do that, right? And ironically, there are, uh, technologies out there that we were installing, candidly, years before COVID even hit, that they kill bugs. And, and it's something you put in and it, and it provides a clean environment and allows you to use a, a lower filtration because it does the filtration for you. There are things that you can do that actually save energy, but also make it a much safer, uh, better environment. And again, whether you believe in the COVID or not, heck, just having clean, fresh air, that's a good thing, right? So, there's a whole lot of, uh, different impacts that, that are real positive, uh, that we can accomplish for you. The process, like I laid out, if you guys have any interest in this, and I'm not looking for any kind of decision from you at all tonight, but if this sounds like something that would be at all intriguing to you, we would be happy to come out, do walkthroughs of your facilities. The, the commitment that we would need from you guys is you, you would need to give your staff the time to help us collect some utility data and maybe walk us around your buildings and let us kind of take a look. And that really, I, maybe to put in perspective for you, the gray hairs really have, I mean, and we've earned them, our team has earned them. We did a project for Pittsburgh State University and, and, uh, the preliminary analysis that we did for them, uh, the president, the vice president, finance, the director of facilities, we presented our preliminary analysis and they said, do you really think you're going to be close to this? And I'm like, yeah, I think we'll be really close to it. And we were about four percent on a five million dollar project. So, I, we, we really will be able to know, just from looking around with you, whether we can help you. And we're willing to make that commitment to you if it's something that you feel like would be of interest to you at all. So, if there's any questions, we'd be happy to answer them. I've got to tell you, thanks for the time you gave. So, I was going to try to be done in twenty minutes. It's because Brad talked too much, right? Thank you very much.
Thank you very much. So, just to kind of wrap that up for you guys, you know, we've talked for the last couple of years about efficiencies. We're, we're a fixed income entity and as our costs go, look, we can't raise prices on anything. So, what I want to do is continue to bring opportunities to you so that you can help direct the school district. And, you know, our last special board meeting, we talked about a lot of the needs that we had, improvement needs, structural needs, HVAC needs. So, I want to keep bringing opportunities to you so that we can make very well-informed decisions on how we move forward. I like everything in the phrase budget neutral. That has a nice ring to me because again, I'm going to talk about student numbers here in my superintendent's report. We are not growing and with decline comes declining funding as well. So, we have to be lean, mean, educating machine. And that's why I bring companies like this for you to talk to.
Thank you, Jeff. Thank you. Do I say it?
First of all, we get into some interesting concepts. You know, we talk about, um, having companies kind of evaluate our structural facility and, and we're going to get some overlap if we don't sort out exactly who we want to do what. So, I'll be discussing, I think I sent you guys an email about DCS doing a complete architectural and engineering evaluation of our facilities. Well, that's going to overlap with things like HVAC or windows that they were talking about. So, we need to find the best of the best and find, for those people who are presenting to us, what, what will their lane be? And if a company like this lane is LED, because Oklahoma LED presented to us last year, but no guaranteed savings. We just need to say, okay, for this company, here's your lane. For this company, here's your lane.
It'd be interesting to see though what their evaluation of the building or the envelope, as they call it, would be versus what somebody else's is.
I would agree, yeah. I thought it was really interesting. I thought they were going to be more lights and energy, and it sounds like they're lean. Money-saving, yes.
You named a project that's...
Yes. And try and figure out how to, a couple of these things, in nine years, ten years, they pay off what they spent. How late a fund a project to get it done? So, which is always good when somebody can tell you that we can help you fund your project with what you're already paying.
And then eventually, we'll just have to make a decision and pull the trigger and get some things done because you know we have windows that have quarter inch gaps and you know we have twenty-seven-year-old HVAC units. So, we have the knowledge, the longer we wait, the, the further we push off those possible efficiencies. You know, like, can't that prove? Oh, we could. Good. Good discussion. Thanks for inviting them. Next, we have the FFA.
Well, you don't have a PowerPoint presentation or anything. We're going to keep it pretty simple. Really, we came tonight, um, most of you are here with me and Morgan, Mitch, the ACT teacher and FFA advisor, and then this is the FFA president, Emily Paul. She decided to come assist tonight as well. Really, why we're here is we want to hopefully gain approval to travel outside the state to Indianapolis for the ninety-fifth National FFA Convention. It's a really great opportunity for the FFA. I plan to take my six officers as kind of a reward for an officer team and then myself and another sponsor. The FFA would be paying for everything except for a vehicle and fuel. And that's another reason that we came to you guys today, so hopefully gain approval for that. After looking at the budget and how everything's going to look, I think we stayed really well with our accounts as far as fundraising goes. We made quite a bit last year on fundraising as well as generous donations. Really, the, the National Commission is just a really good way to make connections with FFA chapters around global United States. People come from everywhere to go to National Commission. There's several local chapters just around Lincoln that are going as well. It, it's just a really great opportunity, I think, that the kids will really enjoy seeing it. It's not something we plan to do every year, but maybe make it every couple or every three years thing, um, just so that way kids can have a chance and as a reward, I think, for all their hard work that they do throughout the year. Is there any questions that you guys have, maybe on National Convention? Anything?
What is it?
It is October twenty-fifth to the twenty-seventh. So, we, we leave on a Tuesday and come back on a Friday is kind of our plan. We drive, our, our plan is to leave Tuesday, drive to St. Louis, stay there, visit the arch, maybe do another ACT tour, um, and then we would go to Indianapolis Wednesday morning for opening ceremonies. I think it starts at ten, um, so we get up early, leave for Indianapolis, get there for that. And then we leave Friday morning to come back home.
And you said you have six officers?
I do have six officers, yes. I have six officers and then myself could go as well as hopefully another sponsor too, um, because Indianapolis is about twelve hours and I really enjoy having somebody else assist me hopefully in driving. So, um, yeah, that's kind of what we're looking at.
How many kids total do you have out for FFA now?
So, actually, as of last week, we got totals, was that last week or two weeks ago? As of right now, so last year I had fifteen and this year it jumped to thirty. So, yeah, numbers, numbers increased quite a bit. So, we're pretty happy about that. And that was, we did talk a little bit about opening up to other, um, members within the chapter, but we thought since the officers worked so hard to become an officer, that is kind of a reward, you know, for them to hopefully push other individuals too for next year, the years after, to become an officer as well.
I, I would like to point out, to steal a movie line, you had me at National Convention because if you remember when we started this discussion two years ago and now all, we already have a chapter, we already have thirty kids involved, we knew this was going to work. We knew this was a great thing. And look, now we can go to National Convention. We compete, we can be more competitive. This is just such an opportunity for kids. And, and I think everybody needs to commend the board for seeing this vision and knowing this is what's right for Lincoln, Kansas, because it's phenomenal.
And I think any chance we have where we can have kids traveling and experiencing different, different places and things, it's very, very important. Through high school, I, I think I went to National Convention for journalism every year and, uh, that was huge, the network, the networking that went on, that went on and the different experience. The networking that went on and the different experiences and just, you know, it's a chance to kind of get out there and see some different things and meet different people. And I absolutely think this would be a great thing.
So you would be funding for gas and transportation?
Yes, yes. FFA cover everything else.
Do we, I mean, without looking at an activity calendar for that week, how is that going to impact?
I think we, because it will be right at the end of volleyball, last week is football, junior high should be done that week.
I've been talking to Jan too, and she has a vehicle reserved if you guys approve as well. So she's kind of been on top of that, making sure that things would work out in alignment with cross-country basketball, or not basketball, but football and volleyball as well.
And we have some nice landing fans that, seven, now we'd have to go with a transit, wouldn't we, with two drivers?
I think if logistically it works out fine for everything, then I'm fully in support of approving it. So I'll make that motion.
I'm going to second that.
Motion by Jason, segmented by Jessica, that USDT 98 approved the National FFA Convention and expo trip to Indianapolis, Indiana, scheduled for, we have one here October 26th through the 29th.
Oh, maybe I might have my dates a little bit wrong.
Okay, okay.
Yeah.
Funds for this trip will be the responsibility of FFA and not borne by USDT 98, except for transportation. Okay. Any other discussion? All in favor? Six oh.
Well, we thank you all for your time and for the approval.
Tech center update. Mrs. Flynn, if you could turn the iPad to the screen, I think you get a light off so everybody can see. Because this is kind of the first sneak peek inside. These are the pictures that I sent to the board, and I thought it would be valid to kind of let the community see how we're coming along. I did crop them somewhat, so it really just focuses on the welding booth, which is important. I am excited to say that as of right now, we've got the welding booth completed. We have all the ventilation on the outside completed. It's functional. We need to get some safety guards on the exhaust fans. Last week, they installed the car lift for the auto parts, so that is functional and ready to go. We have to get some electricity to it. The welders are in. The kids have been spending their time in auto tech, putting together the rolling toolboxes. So we've got six branded rolling toolboxes, all branded toolsets. Things are really, really exciting. We are waiting on, we are waiting on, again, still fire alarm system issues and fire marshal final inspection. The welding class has moved into the metal shop and we've worked out a schedule with Mrs. Nish so they can get some hands on. They, I was in there Friday and they were welding under the instruction of Mr. Meyer. The auto tech kids have been driving to Salina, working with that equipment, passing safety tests so that when this is installed and electrified, they're all ready to go with the lift and ready to work. I'm providing a vehicle for them to do that. Those kind of kids did not sign up to be in a classroom. And so Mrs. Flynn and I have brainstormed, how do we get them hands on? Because that's what they want, that's what they're there for. They did spend a couple of weeks going over OSHA safety things and stuff in the classroom, but nobody was disappointed when we said we had an idea to get them out of the classroom and into a shop. So that's working out well. We did order two signs from Sign Pro in Salina, and this is what they look like. One will go on the east side of the building and one will go on the south side of the building. Mrs. Flynn picked those up today. They're approximately four foot by six foot signs. So we're very excited to get to the final inspection. And then I would ask the board if we could have some sort of an open house once we get it all cleaned up and have kind of the community reception there with our instructors.
Thank you both for all the time and effort to come keep this moving forward. Okay. Administrative reports or building reports?
I have kind of made an executive decision. You can tell me to take it back. I don't want Mrs. Flynn taking the time to sit down and making a journal entry, so I've asked her to just give verbal reports so that we can just have quick, kind of bullet point updates. And our time between buildings and between other roles is kind of limited and I don't want her to feel the pressure of, I've got to sit down and write a two-page dear diary of activities. You can tell me otherwise, but that's just what I thought.
So schools, we're finishing our first four weeks, or month of school, four weeks in. Just to start out, we did, at the high school, we did open house again. And our open house was new students, sixth graders and freshmen. They do a shortened day until 1:00 and we just kind of do some activities with them. They go through their schedule very shortened. I talked to the kids and I said, "Is this useful?", especially the freshmen who have, and they're like, "Yes, it is actually really nice where there's not everyone there." So it was another successful year, I think we'll keep that. We did move Meet the Teacher night at the elementary school to after the year started. The teachers kind of requested that because it's just mass chaos, only having a couple of days to get ready. So they really appreciated it. But I think we need to change the name from Meet the Teacher to something else because we have several parents who are like, "Well, I already know the teacher." Well, it was really, it's more of a, this is my rules, guidelines, this is how you meet us, this is the things or getting hold of us, this is some things that we're going to do in your class, things like that. So I think we need to change the name, but I do think it was really well received doing it the following week after school's already started and things have kind of settled in and the kids can kind of show their parents where their class is and where their desk is and things like that. So those were some changes that we did in terms of this year and starting the year out. We started a career life planning. Mrs. Crenshaw and Mr. Falcon are teaching the career life planning class in our junior high. It's been very well received. We've had a lot of donors donated to the supplies. What it is, they're doing some cooking, they're learning some life skills. We're hoping to maybe teach them how to change a tire, how to tie a tie, how to sew on a button. Just some general things that junior high kids might need to know in life that we don't really offer in any other classes. And so we have revived, Mrs. Crenshaw has revived the fax room, the old fax room. It hasn't been used in about 25 years. So there's some really interesting things in there. I think Mr. Crenshaw cleaned that out this weekend. I cleaned it out last summer and we probably need another load of old stuff to go to the trash can. But, so that we've been getting donations from some people in the community, so we really appreciate all the parents that have helped with that and getting them some sets of things to kind of just learn. They made pancakes the very first week and they thought that was the most best in the whole world. So I think it's going to be a very successful class for our junior high kids just to learn some basic life skill planning, planning class, life skill planning. And actually, the class is an intro class to several CTE courses. And so we'll actually be able to, like, our kids that go down to the elementary school and do teacher aid, we'll actually get CTE funding for them now because they've done this intro class in junior high. So it's going to actually work out really good for our benefit in that way. Sports have started. In week four, we've had quite a bit of success. Actually, our junior high is doing really, really well. We have great numbers. We have 26 out for junior high volleyball, which is a double-edged sword in some cases because we have, a lot of the teams in our league don't have enough kids, so then our kids aren't going to play. So we're trying, when we have home games, we scrimmaged them the other night. I'm trying to work with a couple other schools that have a ton of kids. And we're going to have a C-team junior high volleyball night, which will be very fun and entertaining. But it'll get those kids a lot of playing time that they really need and keep them interested in the sport. We have 15 out for junior high football. They're undefeated and they're doing really, really well. High school football has 26 out. They've played two real close games. High school volleyball has 22 out and we have seven out for cross-country. Our cross-country team's doing really well. They, last week, several of the kids medal, so very exciting there, both from the high school and junior high side that bring home a lot of hard work. So great success to the athletes so far, a month in. We did, we started an all-day testing day. So in the past, to do our progress monitoring testing, we've had, we've done it in the English classroom and the math classroom and it's always fallen on those teachers. And it's, it's hard because the kid's gone and that teacher has to go find the kid and test them on their own time. It's a struggle. With our shortened schedule on Wednesday, we put all hands on deck. In the junior high high school, we created a schedule and they did all their testing in one day. And it was very, very successful. So they did a test and then they would go do an activity with another group of teachers and then they'd come back and do like a math test. There's three different parts to it. And so we were able to just kind of knock it out, other than a few kids missing. We'll do the same thing again in December, right before Christmas break, and that'll be our mid-testing. And then we'll do another in like the end of April to do our final to see if we've had growth. The other thing to that is, we started, last year, we haven't done MTSS and it's kind of a requirement or push from the state to have a MTSS program, which is multi-tier system of support. And we've never done one, and a lot of it's just because of lack of staff. So we did a lot of brainstorming. Last year, our sixth graders did MTSS every day with Mrs. Patee and Ms. Watson, and they showed tremendous growth. They presented to you guys. This year, we have found a way to do it with our junior high. So sixth grade's doing the same thing that they did last year. And then seventh, eighth grade, all of our seventh and eighth grade junior high teachers teach at the same exact hour. And so we have several groups that we're able to branch our kids out. And the kids that are tier one, we are able to push them, push them, push them. And the kids that need some extra support systems, we're able to break them into smaller groups and give them those supports. In the high school, another issue we have is we don't have the personnel to be able to break all our kids up. So what we've done is we've created an MTSS hour on Wednesdays. And Mrs. Watson and Mrs. Patee do all the testing and they divide and tier the kids out and then they create the lesson plans. And we have all our teachers, we have them tiered out. Some of them are more math, stronger in math and some of them are stronger in reading. So we split those teachers and we have several people on deck trying to do that. And hopefully, we're able to give some of our kids that need that extra support the opportunity to get it. It's only one day a week, but it's better, I tell the staff all the time. And what we are doing is nothing, so this is better than what we are doing. And we'll continue to try and improve on that, but we have never had it in the past. The elementary school has not done MTSS math in the last several, several years. And so we were able to create that this year. And so I'm hope, I'm very excited for the next three or four years to see the growth that we're going to show putting these systems in place. So I think that's all I got. I didn't bring everyone the numbers, I guess, and you have them. I knew you would. I had it written, but I just didn't write it out. I think that's, that's all I got. Does anybody have some questions for me?
I don't know how much Mrs. Flynn at the junior, senior high has been involved in developing and implementing MTSS, but at the grade school, the staff has been fully, what's the word, empowered. And they have taken that on. They know what works best in that building. We are learning and they have implemented it. We have staff that are amazing. And they do, we have small number who do great things. And we are implementing things that much larger districts try to do because our people believe it's right for kids. And I have not been in the buildings as much as I have this year, obviously, but I am continually impressed with the people who teach our children.
Well, and I'll add on, it's so fun to listen to some of the teachers get like giddy about the progress that our kids show, especially the MTSS. Like, I had to like find them, like, I had to go do something else. They were just rambling on about all the stuff that they have accomplished and done. And we just sent Ms. Watson to an MTSS training and I'm just so excited to see the progress that we have. One thing that's so interesting, we even had a phonics program in many years. I don't know how long. And some of our fast bridge data shows huge gaps in our phonics program with our junior high and high school kids. And so one of the things we talked about at the junior high high school level is with them getting that phonics program at the elementary, what growth that will show of the high school and maybe bridge some of those gaps. It's going to take some years to see it, but it's just exciting to watch what we've been able to accomplish.
Are you seeing a silver bullet from these numbers?
Depends on how you look at it. So what I have for superintendent for a couple of things, I wanted to tell you that DCS is going to do an evaluation of our facilities. So as I said, they're going to come, they wanted copies of our blueprints, but when I went back to the four or five drawer, blueprint drawer, there must be 30 blueprints in there. Some of them are this big around and some of them are this big around. I called the guy, I go, "I don't even know what you want. I don't even know which of these are relevant." I don't, I know that when the high school was proposed, there were changes to make it fall within budget. So I don't know which blueprints were the changes and which were the dream. And so they're going to come out here and we're going to bring them all in the boardroom here and we're going to unroll them and try to figure out what's relevant, what's not. They'll digitize everything for us. But anyway, that's the ongoing thing with DCS. The student count comparison that I gave you, I just have been very worried about enrollment numbers. And so what I did Friday was I compared my SO66, the superintendent organizational report last year that's done after the September 20 date. I didn't want to wait that long for count day. So I compared it to what Power School showed for students. And these are the numbers. 21, 22 is from my SO66. 22, 23 is what Power School showed as of Friday. So if you go down to the bottom there, and what I did, just kind of data nerd stuff, I drew lines corresponding of kindergarten became first grade, what happened to the numbers and on down. I just didn't know if you'd want a messy sheet like this. If you disregard the fact that we put three-year-olds in this year, and that's what that summary is down there, without pre-K, then we're down two students from 307 to 305. If you look at pre-K, you throw four-year-olds in, but then you throw 17 three-year-olds in, then we're up 10 students. But preschool kids don't get funded at a full FTE. If they have circuit qualification criteria, then we could get funding of .5 FTE for preschool students. What I always try to look at is trends and patterns. And I still say that if you look at our trends from, say, ninth grade down, it's a decline. And those smaller classes will grow through and then I bite my nails wondering what will come into pre-K3 and pre-K4 next year. Because if pre-K4 doesn't grow to kindergarten, then we're going to have a class of 12 move through the school district. That's concerning. I don't, I would rather not see that sort of a pattern. I like these 23s, 24s. If we get into the 17s to 19s, that's concerning if that's what moves through over the next 10 years. So just wanted to show those to you, keep you on top of information. Once we get the student count in September 20 and we compile that data, we'll see if there's any significant changes from this.
The good thing is we lost, we lost seven kids between our senior class to our kindergarten. So we actually picked up some, only dropped two in enrollment across our other classes. It's, it's a little deceiving to see that we lost two, but when you look at that 25 and we brought in an 18, we did.
And my year's class is relatively large, we're prepared to sell our high school classes. And this year's senior class is extremely small. It's as small as we have in the, in the building at the, at the Lincoln High School building.
Should help maintain some of that. Pre-K numbers, too, guess that they're a little bit lower just because some parents maybe would send their kids to preschool.
But what's interesting is pre-K4 in 2021 was 17 and only one, we only gained one moving to kindergarten. So that, you know, that's just interesting data. You can read a lot into it, you can read a little into it. We don't have a lot of control over it, we only react to it. We have this year that we're guaranteed funding at our 311 if we drop below 311. And we have next year. And then we'll have a population correction again for funding and we'll have to go with a real number. So we're okay this year, we're okay next year, and then we'll see where we're at. So we're okay this year, we're okay next year, and then we'll see where we're at total. And if we have to claim less students, then we'll dress up as why I'm so eager to streamline and be lean and be mean and save money. Prepare for the future.
Can you put that plug out there?
Any more kids? Any more kids? I'm ready.
Don't look at me.
That's all I have. Your board report. I've been a bit busy. I mean, I could tell you, this mud in those bathrooms, anybody any good at sheep rock mud? I'm not.
It's wonderful. Unless anybody has questions for, it's not in here. Not going to want to have some information. Don't have that, we'll work through a journey.
So move.
We're invited Gina, seconded by Bree, the lead feature.
As opposed to journal announcement, I would encourage any and all board members to come over and see us at the grade school. One of us tries to be there every single morning when kids get dropped off on the east side. Have a, have a greeting morning with us, hang out, we'll take you in and show you some fun stuff that's going on and nothing makes you happier than spending some time in the grade school.
What did you look at there the other day?
I go, greatest of all time. That was.